We didn't do too much homework for tonight since you had to come here. But thank you, everybody, and thank you to the parents for... It's been moved by councillor Davy that the minutes of the regular meeting held September 24th, 2018, and the special meetings held September 24th. Councillor Singh.
I'm sorry, I can't find my note. Can I just come back to you? Is that okay?
Yep. In terms of communications, unless otherwise directed, I'll refer the communications as listed on the agenda to file. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We'll then move on to our presentations. I will just note that 5B, the 2018 Ontario Building Officials Association Andy Kit Award, has been moved to our December 17th meeting. So we'll be dealing with that presentation at our next meeting in December. So we now move on then to a point in the evening where we get to acknowledge and show appreciation to three members of our council who have served the past eight years on council and won't be returning in December. And so tonight, I'd like to acknowledge councillors Frank Etherington, Yvonne Fernandez, and Zegunetsky. And I'll do these in alphabetical order, and we'll start with councillor Etherington. And when the time comes, at the end of what I have to say, I'll invite each of the councillors forward. We have something to present to you on behalf of council, and we'll take a picture and go from there. So the first person that we'd like to acknowledge this evening is councillor Etherington. Councillor Etherington has lived in the city of Kitchener for over 45 years. As many of you know, he's had a successful and longstanding career prior to politics with the Waterloo Region Record as an award-winning investigative journalist and a, at times, maybe outspoken columnist focusing on municipal affairs, affordable housing, poverty, and social and neighbourhood issues. He was, during his time on council, very passionate about the preservation and protection of heritage buildings, the creation of additional affordable housing, poverty reduction, and social issues. His accomplishments over the past eight years include Victoria Park reconstruction, which was nominated as a great place by the Canadian Institute of Planners. He supported and advocated for a plan to create incentives to spur more affordable housing. He was supportive of the participatory budgeting initiative, which saw residents taking part in the budget process for projects in their neighbourhood. He was supportive of grassroots initiatives to encourage diverse creative communities, and he advocated for intensification while maintaining the heritage aspects of local neighbourhoods. Colleagues, please join me in acknowledging and thanking councillor Frank Etherington. Councillor Etherington.
He said a few words. I've got a 30-minute speech here. No, no. Just kidding. I just wanted to say, when you win by one vote, that was my first election. It teaches you to be excessively humble and cling desperately to your sense of humour. And now it makes me smile that Debbie Chapman, I don't believe Debbie is here tonight, the person I defeated by that one vote eight years ago, is now going to replace me and represent Ward Nine for the next four years. I think she would do a great job. And over coffee, Debbie and I have joked about that somewhat ironic twist. I hope that election result taught us how vital it is to vote, because a single vote can make such a difference. And believe me, I experienced this hundreds of times, as Ward Nine residents insisted, wherever I met them, that their individual vote won me that election, and I tell them they did. Meanwhile, my darling wife Sue took to calling me the "one-vote wonder", which also became part of my life. In return, I reminded her many, many times that she had been my campaign manager and the person totally responsible for that narrow victory. I used that one-vote win many times when I spoke to hundreds of kids about the importance of voting, and I also gave the same message to reluctant adult voters, who often said they didn't vote because their votes made no difference to the election results. So after that exhausting election, we tried to run away to Cuba to recover. And when we arrived, it was faraway Cuba, oozing post-election relief. I walked through the lobby of our resort and could not believe what I suddenly heard. It was the voice of a kind-hearted Ward Nine tourist who proceeded to buttonhole me and ask if I had heard that there had been yet another vote recount. Ignoring my efforts to escape, he added that he had a copy of the record in his room, reporting the recount, and promised to deliver it to me. He did just that a few hours later, as I sprawled on a beach chair trying to sample various rum-based drinks. So... but seriously, I'd like to express my heartfelt votes to heartfelt thanks to voters our mayor and some of our councillors. Note the word "some". Also, to our patient staff, who for years have tolerated my appalling high-tech and financial ignorance. Returning to the humour, one other sobering thing I learned was never to get too big for my lederhosen. I don't have any lederhosen, but I will always remember the time when, feeling a tad self-important, I came back to earth abruptly after bumping into three women in Victoria Park as I hurried to a council meeting. They looked over at me, and one woman shouted to her friends, "That's Fred. I voted for him. He's my Member of Parliament." Thank you. Well, Fred...
Councillor Fernandez. During her time on council, she's been very passionate about environmental protection, cycling infrastructure, and heritage preservation amongst other things. Her accomplishments included being a dedicated... ...in Upper Canada Park. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in acknowledging and thanking councillor Fernandez. Councillor Fernandez, would you like to say a few words? Okay. Whoops. Over to you.
You'd think I would know what button. You know, it's a bittersweet moment when you decide to run for council, and you're probably thinking, "Wait a minute, that should be when you decide not to run." But because I had a wonderful job and a wonderful family, and things were going really well, but I wanted to be a very active part of this community, more so, if you can believe it, than lobbying for environmental issues and being on the environmental committee and nagging many of our staff for years about what they should be doing with planning and how they should plan development. And when I won, I remember running up the stairs to go to the bathroom. I had to excuse myself from the party, and I looked in the mirror and went, "Oh, my goodness, I won. Now what?" And you know what? It has been a rollercoaster ride of excitement and rewards and challenges and getting to know some amazing people. And I have to say that there are friendships that I have created that I never would have expected to have created. I walked in here with a big chip on my shoulder, and both, and I know Dan Chapman will remember this, with both guns blazing, I was going to change the world. And you know what? Maybe I've changed a few things, but I think what will stay with me is the memories that I have created and the people that I have met and the friendships that I have made. Serving the public is an honourable and wonderful opportunity, and I think that I will never forget that. I will never forget some of the crazy emails I get and some of the things that people get upset about, but I also will remember the good things that have happened and the people that I've been able to help. I think I've been pretty vocal about term limits and about being a city councillor and what it means, because there are times when you need to just... And I think councillor Etherington did say it, "Never get too big for your britches or your lederhosen or your skirt or your shoes, because your residents will pull you back down to reality pretty darn quick." Thank you for this opportunity, both to Ward Four residents who may be watching this, to the staff who are sitting here, past and present, and to council for letting me be the person I am here today. Thank you.
Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, councillor Zegunetsky. And councillor Zegunetsky also served on council for eight years, from 2010 to 2018, but this was merely a short period of his overall time with the city of Kitchener. Councillor Zegunetsky graduated from the University of Toronto with an honours BA in urban geography planning, and went on to have a long and distinguished career with the city of Kitchener until 2001 in her planning department. Various positions he held for a total of 28 years. In his personal time, councillor Zegunetsky has had a passion for music. He's a violinist with the Kitchener Waterloo Community Orchestra, and many of you might recognise him as the voice of classical radio on the weekly programme Starlight Concert on our local community radio station, FM 98.5. Councillor Zegunetsky has been passionate about heritage preservation, fiscal accountability, and urban planning. During his time on council, his accomplishments included facilitating the creation of a mural in Balamont Village and helping establish a new community garden in Zowski Park. He advocated for Glasgow Street residents who didn't want sidewalk infill. Councillor Zegunetsky also worked hard on animating his ward by establishing a classic car cruise night in Balamont Village and continuing to build an existing cruise night on Highland Road. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating and thanking councillor Zegunetsky. Councillor Zegunetsky, did you want to say a few words? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. It has really been an honour to represent the citizens of my ward, Ward Eight in Kitchener. It's been a wonderful experience to communicate with them and help them out on the various issues and problems that they've had. It's interesting to note that the residents come to you with a problem and ask for help. They've had challenges in terms of maybe understanding the bureaucracy, that the process maybe got roadblocks by staff in terms of policies and rules that they didn't understand, and staff were administering and enforcing, and yet they still look for help. With all my years of experience of having worked with the city as a city planner, and when you work as a planner, you work and associate with different departments, because planning involves engineering, parks, legal, clerks, finance, the outdoor groups as well. The groups I'm referring to is people that get coughed with, the outside workers, et cetera. So having the knowledge of knowing how the system works, knowing the bureaucracy that they have to go through, I also even contributed to the bureaucracy in writing staff reports and creating bylaws and agreements as well, and knowing that years later I have to enforce them or address them one way or the other. But it's a real experience to letting the citizens know whether you were successful in the end, of which more than 95% of the time I was, and sometimes you just ran into a roadblock that rules and regulations just didn't allow you to move any forward, and the residents were still happy that you represented them and gave it your best to help them out. And not only that, in representing the citizens in my ward, I also received dozens and dozens of calls or emails over the years from citizens in other wards who wanted help, knowing my expertise and background, and looking for assistance in one way or the other. They also knew what my position was in terms of voting on council on various issues and saw that my background in voting was what they were looking for and support. And it was a pleasure helping those people out as well, and the citizens of Kitchener from other wards. That would have been represented out here in front of council at the various topics that maybe would have come in, from bicycle lanes to zone changes to subdivisions. There was a whole variety of issues. It is interesting that, having worked with the city, I've established a long list of people that I had associated with for many, many years as a staff person. And when I came back on council, a number of them are still around, although they're slowly retiring one by one as we move on in time. And having that connection and liaison with staff, I was able just to walk right in, knew who to contact, know what the issue was, and able to address the issues very, very quickly. Also, having been a staff person, it gave me the appreciation of knowing what staff have to do. Sitting here in a horseshoe, I knew what staff had to do in terms of preparing reports, all the research that had to go in behind it, going through the process of getting your reports approved and et cetera. And that was part of that, so I can understand where staff's position was coming from many, many times. But after I retired from the city in 2001, I went into consulting field in the private sector for about nine years, and I got to experience what the development industry, and even just Joe Citizen, has to go through to find out that, "You can't fight City Hall." Well, you can. I was able to help them out as best as I can because of my background, and that was a good asset to have. And so having worked with the, in the consulting private field, making presentations here before council or different committees, I was able to help clients out as best as I could to get their approvals and achievements, whatever they needed to get addressed. When I ran for council, I felt that I had the experience of both sides of the fence, having been a staff person here for almost three decades, knowing the bureaucracy, knowing what has to be done, and yet having represented clients for almost a decade, and knowing the difficulties and challenges that the public has in addressing their concerns at City Hall, and the difficulty they have of trying to achieve what their goals and objectives are in terms of approvals, or asking for things not to be approved as well, depending on their position. So I came here to, as a councillor, being able to provide the citizens of my ward and the citizens of Kitchener with the experience of being on both sides of the fence. And now being here on council, I was able to make the decision using proper rationale, common sense, and being able to address the problem and either vote with what staff had been recommended, or support the residents and developers and people who are as delegations in terms of their concern. So I felt that it was a wonderful opportunity to serve. I have enjoyed working with staff over the years, many of them, and having known them, but they just keep changing all the time. They just, the process of, as time moves on, people come and people go, and new people come as others retire. In conclusion, it really has been an honour to serve here at council. It's been a privilege, and to all the citizens in my ward and to the citizens of Kitchener who are watching on TV as well, thank you very much for having chosen me and elected me back in the last two terms. It certainly has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Once again, I would just like to thank all three of you for your eight years of service to our community in your time on council. There's no doubt that all of you continue to have much energy and will continue to find many ways to be involved in the community. So on behalf of all of us at the city of Kitchener, best wishes as you go on to new adventures and hopefully a little bit of relaxation time as well. Okay. With that then, we will move on to delegations, and we have a number of delegations this evening. There is one delegation who's here with respect to, just to answer any questions, with respect to Committee of Adjustment, the two sign variances. Does somebody care to move those? Councillor Fernandez, is there a second there? Councillor Singh, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favour? Opposed? That's carried. The signs, I'm not sure who it was, but, oh, the signs have been approved. Great. Thank you. Well, now then move on to item 6A, which is with respect to the notice of intention to designate 200 Fairway Road South, and we have a total of six delegations for that number. And I'll remind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentation. And our first delegation is Sandra Parks. Welcome, Ms. Parks.
Hi, how are you? I've got a bit of a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not sure exactly how to use this. Is it pretty straightforward? Is it just... okay, good. Hello, I'm Sandra Parks. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Architectural Conservancy of Ontario, North Waterloo Region Branch. The traditional view that heritage, the traditional view is that heritage buildings are old. Soon after the Ontario Heritage Act was passed in 1975, Lackack volunteers here in Kitchener were looking at the oldest and grandest structures in our community. But it didn't take them long to see that those built in the 1910s, 20s, and 30s were worthy of identification and protection. They were not much more than 50 years old at the time. Today, we're talking about the interultimately changes to a 53-year-old mid-century modern structure, the Sears Building. We should consider the best of all architectural styles to have cultural heritage value and take steps to conserve these examples. Kitchener has thousands and thousands of properties, but only 230 are listed on the municipal heritage register, and fewer than 90 are individually designated under Part IV of the Act. It's a limited resource that is gradually being chipped away. Kitchener has its own unique culture and heritage. Our places, spaces, our places, spaces, and stories are integral to our identity. This building is part of that, the authentic Kitchener. And our right to that authentic community is backed up by provincial, regional, and local municipal policies. The Ontario Heritage Act provides municipalities with the tools and, more importantly, the responsibility to identify, evaluate, and conserve cultural heritage resources. The provincial policy statement says significant built heritage resources shall be conserved. Ontario Regulation 906 sets out the evaluation criteria used to determine whether a property is of cultural heritage value. Professor Rick Holdenby of UW School of Architecture has heard about this proposal from the fall term he's teaching in Rome, and he sprinkled, I've sprinkled a few as his comments to us at home throughout this presentation. As Mr. Bensasson rightly pointed out in his report, these regs only require that a property meets one or more of the criteria to be eligible for designation under Part IV of the Act. And the Sears Building, sorry, and the Sears Stage One Heritage Impact Assessment established that this property has design or physical, what we used to refer to as architectural value, as a unique and the earliest example of this style of international architecture in Kitchener. I contend the Sears Building also has historical or associative value. This building has a direct association with at least two organisations, Sears and Dunker Construction, that are significant to this community. The Sears Building caps, the Sears Building caps the continuum of Dunker-built buildings. The city of Kitchener official plan has clear cultural heritage guidelines. You've heard them from heritage planning staff many times before. Heritage Kitchener's four-step listing process is thorough and objective, is a thorough and objective evaluation of potential heritage structures. Many properties that were on the original inventory of historic buildings did not make the cut. The Sears Building did. The HIA suggests the preferred conservation option is to preserve a small, out-of-the-way section of the original facade in a rarely-used, narrow corridor entrance to the mall hardly visible to anyone who doesn't travel this route. It is a minimal impact on the heritage features, as the HIA states. It is a minimal impact on the heritage features as the HIA states. The HIA proposes to re-clad the Sears Building with contemporary sheath that takes its cues from Ontario's historical architecture in a, in a part of our city that never had industrial buildings of this vintage. Brick and beam have been the buzzwords with the tech industry for quite a while. I can see how this sounds like a great marketing tool, but why build a fake brick and beam building when we already have an authentic mid-century modern one? And don't buy the argument that this is the only option. The owners employ smart, innovative, creative people who can come up with, with a design that will satisfy most of us. We have plenty of examples that have worked in Kitchener. Mr. Bensasson is optimistic that the development review process can achieve meaningful protection to the heritage features. Regardless of your decision tonight, as Professor Holdenby says, we need an outcome that retains more of the material and spirit of this impressive facade. I urge you to send a strong message to city staff and the developer to come up with a design that respects the cultural heritage value of the building and still meets the needs for its future uses. Two months ago, we celebrated the 25th anniversary of the construction of our award-winning, I still call new, City Hall. There were still many people complaining at, at that ceremony about the demolition in 1973 of our first purpose-built City Hall. Don't allow another heritage building to go under the, the wrecking ball, something we may regret in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Parks? Councillor Fernandez?
Thanks, Ms. Parks, for your presentation. From what you have seen about the redevelopment of this site, your understanding is the facade of the Sears Building, which sort of that swooped look to it, is going to be embedded within the new structure? Is that what you're understanding?
I believe what they're proposing, and they'll be talking later about this, is at least three sides of, of the existing building will have sort of a take on industrial, historic industrial architecture. So red brick, large windows with, you know, metal designs on it, and then a small section, that narrow corridor that is only about maybe 20 feet wide. So if you're standing like this, you, you can't really see it head-on, will, will, will be the only part saved. What I'm suggesting is there's another way to design the outside of the whole building. So for example, I've included a picture of the Deloitte offices with that glass atrium that sort of bisects the building. If, if, if they're proposing five retail stores that, that entrance, enter and exit off of the parking lot, if they use, let's say some, not an architect, but if they use something like this design for each entrance, they could get the light and the windows that they're looking for, and yet in between the entrances, they could still have the original fabric of the building. I'm just looking, asking them to look for a, a design that incorporates more of the original fabric than what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Councillor Janetski.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. In, in describing the portion of the concrete slabs that are intended to be saved, they will be hidden in behind the, the building as it abuts the, the balance of the mall, you would rather see that the, those portions of the, the heritage feature be left that face towards Fairway Road?
Correct.
Correct? Would you want to see all of it or even just portions of it?
I believe for a variety of reasons, I want to remove about 20%, 20% of the building. So that may be an opportunity to do something different than what is there, but I would like to see as much as, as much as possible, the rest of the exterior of the building kept. I'm not sure if they'll be keeping the facade behind, the new facade, or if they'll be removing those concrete semicircles and then applying a new facade onto the building. So I don't think they'll be, underneath that new facade, there won't be the old facade remaining.
In, in describing what you want to preserve, have you seen what their new design, the Grand Market District looks like? Have you seen this before?
Sure, I've included it in my presentation. So this is, this is what was included in the HIA. So this is what I base my comments on.
Okay. And I, and I see where you're coming from on that. I, I just have a different one from different angles, so I didn't quite.
Right.
Quite catch it. But they're trying to bring in, in industrial look and, and brickwork, but, but that's from a different era.
Pardon me?
That's from a different era, timeframe, as opposed to the time that the Sears was built back in the mid-'60s with the, the Kennedy, you know, modern look to it.
That's right. This was a farm, this is farmland. Maybe, and this is facetious, of course, but maybe a drive-in theater would be more apt for this location than, than an industrial, an industrial building from 1900. There weren't any buildings like this in the area. And while I do happen to like the, the new proposed four-story building, even with those, with those two restaurants and a fake water tower, but I think the, the Sears Building is, is the only really part that I'm, I'm asking council to send this strong message to the developer and, and staff to work together to come up with a compromise.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Atherton. Sorry, hang on, try that again. Go ahead.
Ms. Parks, could you expand a little on some of your thoughts about the smokestack and water tower?
There never were, there never was a building with a smoke, smokestack of this style in this location. There never was an industrial building with a water tower. There may have been a, a farmstead with a, a windmill bringing, bringing water up from, from, from underneath, so that might be, you know, that might relate to the history of the, of the area. So it's, so it's a, you know, it's a marketing tool that, that they're using. I can understand that. It's sort of a disification of the shopping experience, and that's maybe where malls are going, making it more of an entertainment-type experience. And I can understand that as the marketing tool, but I'm just, I just want the, the Sears Building itself to have as much of the original fabric as possible saved.
Thank you. And the idea of the smokestack, I think you had a picture of a heritage, what is now a heritage smokestack at the Joseph Street Building, is that correct?
At which building?
At the Joseph Street.
Yes, at the.
Deloitte Building.
The Lang, the Lang, I think you can sort of see it behind the Deloitte offices. There is there. So that's the only designated heritage attribute on that property. This building itself is not designated, so there was a little more flexibility to, to put in that, that glass atrium. So that's why I'm not telling you what to do tonight. I'm just saying that I think that there, there should be more flexibility in the design of the Sears Building.
Thank you, and thanks for coming.
Okay, those are all the questions we have. Thank you, Ms. Parks. Our next delegation is Slavko Milodinovic. Welcome, Mr. Milodinovic.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Kitchener, and I believe this is a liberty issue. I believe the Cadillac Fairview, the developer, developer, has the liberty to do business in town. If the municipality of Kitchener takes away their liberty, I will travel to Queen's Park and advocate that municipality of Kitchener is eliminated. So their liberty will be eliminated as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Milodinovic?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next delegation is Ms. Kay Elgi. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Kay Elgi, and I think city of Kitchener would be enriched by having this wonderful mid-century modern architecture continue to greet people as they enter the city from the 401, and the best way to ensure this is to designate it, because that ensures that the conversation with the developer will continue. You may have seen some of the considerable online debate about this project. Some people wonder how a building can be, this building can be old enough to even be considered heritage. Others find it ugly. But personally, once I understood a bit more about mid-century modern architecture, what it was trying to say and where it came from, my appreciation of the style grew. So that's why I want to tell you a bit about it tonight. Mid-century modern architecture set out to make a break with the past, put behind all the ornamenture of the Victorian era, forget about all the magnificent buildings that got bombed during World War II, and create buildings that create, that embody the sense of progress in technological discovery that characterized the 1960s and 1970s. Mid-century modern architecture is all about functional beauty. The buildings are streamlined, they're stripped of non-essential parts like gingerbread and ornamental brackets, and they embody the efficiency of the machine age. They also use new building materials, ones that weren't around when the Georgian or Victorian houses were built. They were innovative buildings. Right now, it's true, not everyone appreciates the style. Mid-century modern buildings are at that crisis point. They're too young for most people to consider them heritage, but not old enough to be considered cool, like the old Kitchener factories that have been so successfully converted into post and beam lofts. But give them a few more years and mid-century modern buildings will be the new chic. As long as we don't destroy them all first, Kitchener will have some really attractive heritage buildings to repurpose. These buildings are strong. As the HIA pointed out, the Sears Building is in very good shape. If you leave it standing, I predict it will be in much better shape in 25 years than many of the new buildings that are currently being constructed. I became a heritage advocate because I realized it was better for the environment to conserve and reuse existing buildings wherever possible. So using a formula from the U.S. Federal Emergency Management Agency, I calculated that the demolition of a Sears Building would add 68,444 cubic yards of construction waste to the landfill. Now, if it's just 20% that's demolished, that will mean 2,400 extra dump tuck loads back and forth over our roads that we struggle to properly maintain as it is. And it certainly won't help Kitchener be a leader in environmental sustainability. I'm struggling to understand why Cadillac Fairview is so adamant about demolishing the Sears Building. They say the existing facade would, for many retailers, prevent outward advertising, but a drive-by this afternoon showed the current tenant urban behavior has several very visible signs and windows full of promotional material. Surely, there can be a more creative solution than replacing the beautiful and rare glazed bricks with ordinary red brick that takes its cue from interior and historical industrial architecture. And demolition is especially painful for environmentalists to contemplate when a building is in such good conditions. Cadillac Fairview's other argument seemed to be that the building may eventually have to be demolished or reconfigured if Phase Two of the ION is built, but it's an if-and-when situation, I might argue. During Doors Open, I heard the principal of the Martin Luther University College, formerly Martin Luther, Waterloo Lutheran Seminary, describe how initially he felt they needed a new building to deal with the high heating and cooling costs and awkward interior circulation patterns of their current, of the old seminary. But he was convinced by architect Terry Montgomery that reworking the existing building was a much better choice. Number one, they got better building materials in the old building than they could get or afford if they were building a new one. And reason two, you get a richer building, a building with a story that you can tell to everyone that goes there. This same sentiment was voiced by HIP development president Scott Higgins after his company negotiated with Architectural Conservancy Ontario Cambridge to retain more of the southwards complex than they had been proposing before the OMB hearing. Higgins said, "Without question, the plan we have today, the heritage preservation and the active new street is a better one than what you had when we started the project several years ago." Lastly, I wanted to show you just two examples of many of the successful renovations of mid-century modern buildings. This was a modest plaza in Denver, and the owner of it happened to be one of the many mid-century modern fan club members. And this is, the, the second example is a building, the Jacksonville Library we saw earlier. And this one was in terrible shape when they decided to renovate it. It had been abandoned for seven years when the city had moved to, to a new library. It was quite dilapidated, and yet it was successfully renovated when the president of the Jesse Ball DuPont Foundation decided it would make an excellent home for the foundation and other nonprofits. So these two examples show lots is possible, and if you designate the building, it will, I think, nudge the developer into more deeply considering these possibilities, and we'll all be richer for it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Elgi. We do have some questions for you. Councillor Fernandez?
Thanks, Ms. Elgi, for coming in. You gave us some really interesting examples, and a matter of fact, when you go back a slide or two, there is a building that looks very similar to the Sears Building. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
What would you say is, is one of the most interesting features of the Sears Building? I mean, it's, there's three sides that are very dominant and predominant to the architecture there, but if one side was to be conserved, is there a side that you think would be better to be preserved or included in the renovation of the plaza?
Well, ideally, I would like the building conserved because I think it was designed as a piece, and it stands as a piece. I think, as, as Ms. Parks pointed out, conserving the back alley, which no one, it's very hard to see, is, is not really conserving it at all. I mean, I, I think the reason you would want to conserve it is because it is a work of art of its, of its type. Not everyone will like it, but it is, it is an architectural accomplishment, and I think that that has to be considered when renovation proposals are, are, are given.
Right. And I'm glad to see that you're, you're talking about, you know, mid-century buildings as well, because everybody thinks that heritage has got to be something that's over 100 years old plus, but the uniqueness of this building gives it a definition within the community, I think. Essentially, that's what I'm understanding from what you're saying.
Right. It, it's, it's part, it's part of that particular period in Kitchener. We have a number of, of buildings like that, as, as ACO taught, did a series a few years ago. This is one of them, but it's one in that particular part of, of the community, and I think it really does show our heritage.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, Councillor Janetski.
Thank you for your presentation. The Sears Building, are you concerned at all about the interior in terms of that being preserved in any way, or is it basically the facade, the outside, in all three, four sides?
I'm not sure what the plans are for the interior. I couldn't see anything about that. But, but generally, because I'm thinking about architectural heritage, I'm, I'm thinking about the exterior of it at this point. Because the replacement building is also a one-story shopping mall, I'm not sure that the interior design has too much bearing on the conversation.
Have you seen these drawings as well?
The ones that, that were in the HIA, yes.
Yeah, okay. So you were there and you saw what they were presenting in, in terms of their objectives. You have any comments also on the, the chimney stack and the water tower that they're sort of introducing as a sort of significant features of this new design that tries to reflect the past?
I'm puzzled by it, and to me, to me, but rather than pretending to be a critic of this design, I, like, I come back to why not use this existing building that does have very special materials? Like, where else have you seen green, grays, blix bricks? They're still quite beautiful, you know, or a design like this. Why not keep that special quality as opposed to mimicking things that, you know, it's popular right now, but, but I, but I think there's a way, I would like to think there's a way we could, we could glorify this, I mean, appreciate it because, because it is, it is very special.
So the, the facade, and, and looking at the example you have here on the screen, the, the concrete outside, and I mean, the Sears Building is slightly different, but it sort of emulates a similar focus on it. You could incorporate that Sears concrete base into a design that they're doing there, just modifying it and incorporating it together. Is that what you see feasible?
I, I would think, I would like to think that it could be with some creativity. I mean, I was really impressed with what Terry Montgomery, Terry Montgomery's talk at the Lutheran Seminary and, because that, that, that client there was, was very determined they needed a new building, but he managed to convince them that, that with some creativity and that, that they could incorporate it. They did, they did change a lot about the building, but, but they managed to use some of those beautiful materials and some of the design features that, that he really liked. I, I think it takes creativity for sure.
Yeah.
But I'd like to think it's here, you know, that, that people can do it. I, I do believe it's possible.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, those are all the questions we have for you, Ms. Elgi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening. Our next delegation is Simone Panziera. Our next delegation is Simone Panziera. Welcome, Mr. Panziera.
Thank you. I'm a licensed architect in Ontario and New York State and certified in 42 other states. I can safely say this is a beautiful building and it can command a lot of respect anywhere it could show up in the modern world. And we're still in a modern world. So the building resonates for me because in April 2015, my children, we parked at the hardware portion, the smaller building that might be demolished. But what struck me is I asked my daughter, "What the heck are you guys doing?" They were splaying themselves and going up between the flutes. And they said, "We're practicing parkour." I said, "Well, what's that?" Right? So soon enough, I learned all of these lingo's about climbing buildings and how kids have fun. So what struck me is the very important thing about architecture, no matter when it's done, is to create delight and attract children to participate and find their imaginations activated. So I thought, well, this really passes the test, this building, the Sears building, all the while knowing as an architect that, you know, maybe 20% of the people might like this kind of architecture. Over time, I would say that this building is kind of like that well-traveled uncle on a motorcycle comes back and has certain kind of aphorisms, apogee, is these kind of things that give you a sense of clarity in his succinct words. This is exactly what the facade is doing. But what I like about this facade is the original architects, I'm sorry, I don't know who they are, borrowed a little bit of classical ideas with fluting. So the way the rhythm is set up, you have, I think, a 1 to 9 ratio with the filleted corners. That, I think, speaks to Kitchener's depth of conservatism. And it still actually brings back a little bit of classical architecture. The flutes that I'm talking about are always used in neoplastic work, if you will. I also think that there's a kind of, it would be interesting to see that building stay because what it does is it sets up an interesting counterpoint. Why would you have something that looks like a cool gallery where you could sell expensive art stay there in the middle of a thematic shopping center? Well, that's precisely the irony that I think is deserved to play with, is to keep this dignified thing where you go and spend a lot of money for higher-quality things, and then you could set up the surrounding area with counterpoints to that beautiful dignified space that really, I think, participates on an international level. And people who are visiting would just sort of nod and say, "Wow, that's really neat," because it gives that part of the city a much-needed boost of character and dignity from the I like what Ms. Parks said about the idea that there can be incisions in the building to activate more recognizable entries. That certainly can work. But I think it's a really nice piece to have left behind. It speaks to, and the last point I really want to make is the idea that, it speaks to a subconscious so that if you're a shopper, you're walking by, I think it orders a sort of emotional dignity to create a more interesting passage in time and space. And the proposal, I don't know what's going on in too much detail. I just, I can't speak, I'm not hired, I got, I'm not going to create conflict of interest with the current proposal. But I think it would be a shame to let go of a very nice piece of architecture. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Panziera. Any questions for the delegation? There don't appear to be any. Thank you for coming in this evening. Our next delegation is Mr. Finley McEwen from Cadillac Fairview. Welcome, Mr. McEwen.
Thank you. You worship counselors. My name is Finley McEwen, Senior Vice President of Development with Cadillac Fairview. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the slides. Is there a screen where they're being displayed or?
Clerk's just...
That's right. Thank you.
Clerk's just dealing with it?
I'll just pause for a minute and let them catch up.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I'll get my 20 seconds back, if that's all right. Thank you.
He used to say on TV as we were growing up, "We'll now pause for station identification."
I've got an extra copy, if that's of any help. Pardon? Yep. I... Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Retail has been constantly changing. In the beginning of the last century, retail was largely in small shops oriented towards the street. In the middle of the 1900s, mainly due to the automobile, retail aggregated into shopping centers. In many cases, these shopping centers were anchored by department stores. And then more recently, in this century, many of these department stores have disappeared in Canada. The pace has been quite rapid. We saw Edens disappear in the early 2000s, followed by Target and more recently Sears. And the pace of change continues. There are a number of reasons why department stores are disappearing. Among them, the format of these department stores simply doesn't work for the consumer anymore. The department stores were organized into large floor plates without windows around the perimeter with windowless walls so that lighting could be controlled and the merchandise can be displayed using electric lights in a consistent way from place to place and at different times during the day. And then these department stores tended to be surrounded by large areas of a surface parking lot, and the shopping public has just decided that this is a disagreeable format. It's not a very nice place to be, and it's frankly not very nice for the employees either to be in a windowless space. So shopping patterns have changed. Fortunately, much of the space can be recycled. This is an example of a Target store in London, Ontario, that we redeveloped where the space, which was essentially windowless, was redeveloped for both entertainment and apparel merchants, and a more dynamic exterior was developed. This is a Sears store that was redeveloped in London, Ontario. Similarly, the exterior plaza here used to be essentially a barren space with walls, with brick walls without windows. This restaurant was introduced, and while the restaurant sits inside the store, the exterior-facing facade is much more pedestrian scaled. It's easier for pedestrians to walk past, it's less windswept. This last example is a Sears store in Vancouver that we redeveloped where a different use was able to be introduced into the building. So office space was introduced onto higher floors and retail space redeveloped on the lower floors. Windows were introduced throughout. The windows in the office space allow natural light to enter deep into the floor plate. And on the lower floors, where windows were introduced into the retail space, light can transmit out into the public plaza outside the building to illuminate the area for pedestrians. The shopping centers that were built in the '50s and '60s quite often were built on the periphery of urban boundaries, and in the ensuing years, cities have grown out around them. So what is essentially a suburban form is in many cases now surrounded by built form that's more urban in nature. And where these spaces are coming available to us, we have a rare opportunity to urbanize them, which is good for everyone. It makes use of existing municipal infrastructure in the area, schools, roads, sewers, et cetera, and prevents urban sprawl, which is very costly, as you know. Bringing these ideas back to Fairview Park, our hope is to be able to put them all to work. The site does have some natural constraints. We have a hydro corridor that runs through the property, which is shown in blue on this diagram. But any further move to constrain the store by increasing heritage designation on the Sears facade would essentially render it undevelopable. The Grand Market District vision aims to introduce windows, a variety of materials on the exterior of the building. Our hope is to introduce more uses, office and residential, over time. Warmer materials that are more pedestrian in scale. So rather than what you saw in London with the Sears building, our hope is to introduce materials here which would be more approachable for pedestrians who are navigating the site. More windows to allow natural light to enter into the building and also light from within the building to transmit outside of the building. And increased animation generally to provide for a better pedestrian experience. We are making a major investment in this area. We have invested $34 million to date in the Cineplex Indigo Building on the south side of Fairway Road. The current phase, which involves Sears and the small office buildings, is a $74 million investment. And we have hopes beyond that to invest a further $360 million in office and residential phases on the site. We have proposed preserving some precast and putting in place a commemorative plaque and interpretive panel to explain the nature of what is there. We have received feedback from city staff who view that more is needed. And in closing, I guess we would urge council to vote against any motion to increase the heritage designation on this property because it would essentially tie our hands and present what we feel is a wonderful redevelopment opportunity, a once-in-50-year redevelopment opportunity from progressing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a number of questions for you. Counsel Singh.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. McCown, I appreciate you showing some of the rehabilitation of some of the buildings that you guys have done in other communities. And what I noticed was that much of that is very modern construction as opposed to some of the extensive efforts that you guys have in mind in giving the, well, some may say it's illusion, but nonetheless, it's still homage to the brick and beam construction that's quite prevalent in a previous history in the city of Kitchener. Why is that made? Can you elaborate more?
Only to say that our projects generally draw inspiration from a number of sources. We don't tend to fixate on one period of history or one architectural style. We introduce a variety of styles. I'm sure in those projects, if you looked at them carefully enough, you would find the architects had drawn inspiration from other time periods as well. This palette of materials and this approach to the architecture frankly was driven more by a need to introduce more windows to allow natural light into the building and a warmer palette of material because so much of this project is down at the pedestrian realm and the materials that are there are quite unappealing to most pedestrians who are traversing the site. It was more a practical move to introduce warmer materials and more daylight into the buildings.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad to see the design, the way it does look, the way it's presented. The other thing that you mentioned, preserving the precast construction would outright limit the rehabilitation redesign of the Sears building and the surrounding future developments as well. Could, some of the comments were made, well, could they not still proceed with the other phases while still preserving the Sears building? How are they tied to each other?
I guess I would say, again, it's more of a practical reaction to modernizing a building for modern commercial uses. We encourage retail clients to have operable doors and operable windows, to use a variety of materials rather than making an overpowering, you know, approach. If, you know, coming up with an overpowering visual were something to be permitted, I'm not sure that we would all like the results at the end of the day. And we encourage our retailers to operate in buildings which work well for the pedestrians, work well for the shopping public that have, I say, as I say, operable doors, operable windows, windows that will allow light in. The precast is essentially windowless on the south side. There are some entrances, but there's very few opportunities to introduce windows.
Okay. I appreciate that. And the previous delegations have really, you know, stressed the importance of preservation of construction from this era. But while I'm sure as you went to the Heritage Committee, a Heritage Impact Assessment was required as part of your application, is that correct?
Yes.
And what was the outcome of that Heritage Impact Assessment through the professionals, the planning professionals that have the expertise in seeing, you know, what should be designated or what should be preserved and what can allow for it to be demolished or reconstructed? What was the outcome of that assessment?
It was their conclusion that it was appropriate to allow demolition to proceed.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Gazzola.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. This section of the plaza in the past has been an anchor store, Sears. Going forward with your plans, are you looking at a number of retailers filling this space? Different retailers?
Yes. We've, we're targeting four or five different retailers, and we're aiming to have a variety of uses rather than all fashion. We're hoping to have financial services, restaurants, other types of retailers, health and wellness, et cetera.
Going down the road, if this building is designated by council tonight, what do you see this yourselves there in five, 10 years? What would we have there if it's required to be designated?
Largely what you've got now. We've been owners of this property for a long time. We've got a one-time opportunity now to redevelop it. If we are unable to proceed, we would just simply not proceed with the development here. We have to reassess which properties we would invest in and how we'd go about doing it, but we probably would not invest in this property.
Okay. You're familiar with the staff recommendation that went to Heritage Committee? And staff have recommended a number of three or four different sort of compromises to try to keep safe some of the heritage. Are you committed to working with staff on those and perhaps even going a little further?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Fernandez.
Thank you. In reading the minutes of the meeting, the one side that you talked about in your presentation there was the south facade. So if I'm looking at the building from Fairway Road, is that what you're calling the south side? Or would you call the south side the side that is, I guess, facing the ramp to Highway 8? Because there's different sides.
I acknowledge it's not quite aligned on that compass axis, but we're calling the south side the larger side, which is facing Fairway Road.
Which is what we see in the picture here?
Yes.
Right. Okay. The side that is facing the ramp to Highway 8 actually has quite a number of windows along that side, does it not?
I don't know the exact number. I would call it relatively few when you look at the height of the wall relative to the percentage of opaque or solid materials. The vast majority would be solid materials, precast.
Right. Okay. I guess where I'm trying to get at is what you were talking about was that, you know, new buildings and some of the examples you showed, that there's a push to open it up, add some more light. So my first thought was, well, there's a fair bit of light coming in on that side. Is there nothing in the architectural design that you could say, well, this is, already has some windows, it already has an interesting entrance, and incorporate that into your building? Because I saw, I think if you go back a couple of slides, it looked to me like you had done, so yeah, just the one that you just passed, looked like you were, you're anticipating something. But is this, where in the development is this picture that I'm seeing? What side?
So this is on the north side. This is the portion of precast that we had proposed retaining for commemorative purposes. It's actually a bit of a false perspective because it's shown from an angle that would be hard to replicate in reality, and I acknowledge that... And I acknowledge that we've been asked to preserve more than this, and we have said that we are prepared to preserve more than this.
Okay. You said something interesting. You said, why, and I want to know why you're saying that this is a one-time opportunity. What do you mean by one-time opportunity? I mean, does, you own the mall, you own the lands around it, you own lands across. Why is this so important at this particular moment?
The space has been leased or owned by an anchor department store up until now, so we only get the opportunity now to redevelop by virtue of the fact that we bought back a Sears lease and we have access to the space. Our intent is to get on with redeveloping it in some way, put long-term leases in place and not have to come back in five or 10 years, redevelop it. We want to do this once now, put an appropriate tenancy in place, and then not drastically alter the building again for a period of time. So that's why I would say it's a one-time opportunity or once-in-fifty-year opportunity.
But isn't redevelopment sort of an ongoing process where you see the bigger picture, but then you redevelop in different phases? I mean, certainly when I looked at the plan, I remember, I recall, the person I spoke with or who was, who made the presentation, that there are many, many phases in this, and you identify that right here in this screen as well. So why not think about preserving part of that Sears building as part of that phase?
Our hope is not to be revisiting constantly, redeveloping these properties. Our hope is to do it once, frankly, do it better. We want to try to do a better job of it than what we have now and then not have to come back and constantly redevelop it. We pride ourselves in building very high-quality buildings that don't require constant maintenance or renovation. When we build buildings, we build them to stand the test of time. We're very proud of our portfolio of buildings. We don't sell them, we hold them for very long periods of time and try not to be constantly rebuilding them. So our hope is to do this, do this once now and then not come back and renovate it for a long period of time.
So you really essentially just said, we build buildings to stand the test of time, but we don't want to keep reinventing it. So isn't that exactly what the Sears building is?
The Sears building is not functional in its current form. It has not stood the test of time, in our opinion. It is of no use to modern retailers. We can't put employment space into it because it doesn't have windows. The precast panels themselves have very low insulative value and are very hard to rehabilitate. They actually contain hazardous substances. The caulking has PCB in them, so that's going to have to be dealt with at some point before we re-tenant the building in any long period of time. So in our opinion, we can do better than what was there now and not have to be coming back and constantly refurbishing or rehabbing the building.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. When it comes to that precast portion that you are, that you already had intended to maintain, are, now that you've been, you've agreed to maintain more, which part will you be maintaining? Will it be, will it be more visible to the members of the public?
Staff's intention, I believe, when they made the four requests of us, was to identify a portion of wall that would be more visible. And we have agreed with staff's intention that we will find a location that is more visible to the public.
And is the green glazed brick that's below the precast sections, is that also a part of what you intend to preserve?
Yes, in the area where we preserve the precast, we would also preserve the green glazed brick below the precast.
Okay. And so, and can you tell us a bit about the smokestack and the water tower that's in the drawings? Are those, those are not, those are just, can you tell us about what the purpose of those are?
So these technically qualify as signs. That's how the city would deal with them when we submit these specific permits for these. They're dealt with as signs. Yes, they have a suggestive appearance, and that's certainly not the first time, not the last time, that architects would draw inspiration from something that they've seen in the past and make a form which has, which is suggestive of something that they've seen. But in fact, it's a sign, that's its purpose. And we hope that we can artfully display retail names, wayfinding information, other information on those signs in a way that is interesting and animated for the general public.
Okay. Have you seen examples of heritage preservation that might incorporate some modern design that, like, for example, waterfall glass that would be, you know, enclosing the heritage feature? And do you, can you picture that perhaps in the section that you're going to preserve that you could use a feature like that to add more light to the building but still preserve the precast section?
It's our view that the precast, the south-facing or the Fairway Road-facing elevation of precast is not something that can be reworked or dealt with or overclad or enclosed in any way. It's quite an inhospitable environment for pedestrians. It's not approachable for shoppers. The shopping public is not drawn into an image like that. At the pedestrian level up close, on a cold day, it's not a very nice place to spend time. Light from within the building does not pass through out into the public areas to give the space any animation. So in our opinion, the south-facing Fairway Road elevation cannot be redeveloped.
Okay. And my last question is, in the minutes, it talks about twenty percent of the building being demolished. What would be the twenty percent? Which part is the twenty percent?
The, so, the site is bisected by hydrolands, and the hydrolands have been the, chosen right-of-way for the ion line up until now. We don't know where ion phase two is going to go. As it happens, the fire routes and the access routes for our project were built historically on those hydrolands. It wasn't the very wise way to build the shopping center because, in fact, we don't own those lands, and it's something that we've been working very hard with city staff to rectify. The city will need a Section 41, our Site Plan Control Agreement for this site, to provide for continuous fire exit routes and bus routes. Grand River Transit needs to be able to traverse through this site in a continuous way. So a portion of the building has to be taken down in that location so that no critical access or regus routes sit on hydro, on the hydro right-of-way.
I'm confused, though, because if that's the section that needs to be demolished, that's not the precast architecture, that's a very small part of it, right?
That's correct. That portion of the building was actually in addition to the building after its original construction date. It was also clad in the precast finned panels. And it's, and that portion of the building sits out immediately adjacent to the hydro right-of-way, so there's no room to bring emergency vehicles, et cetera, through there between the hydro right-of-way and the building, which is the reason why it has to be taken down.
So I'm out of time, but just, I, so you, just if I can just, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to understand, so you're trying to take away that section, demolish that section, but you're also planning to just demolish the facade, but, and repurpose or reconstruct the facade, but keep the remaining portion of the building? Is that correct?
That's correct. We're recycling approximately eighty percent of structure of the building, the roof structure, et cetera. And on the portion of the building that we are recycling, we're proposing removing the exterior cladding, installing new, more insulated cladding material, providing a better building envelope so that the building has better energy performance, but otherwise retaining columns, beams, roof structure of that portion of the building.
Right, got it. Thanks.
Okay, I've got still lots of questions. I've got four people and then one a second time. Counselor Etherington.
Mr. McCown, thanks very much for coming in. Who is the architect for the new building? Or is that in your material? I can't find it.
So the, there are a team of architects. There's a Canadian architect, Petroff, and an American architect, Roy Higgs International, who have both contributed to the design of this project.
Canadian and American. And I want to get this absolutely crystal clear, I'm still not clear on it. As we, as you continue discussions with staff, Cadillac Fairway is not going to preserve any of the precast part of the front of the building facing Fairway Road, am I correct?
That's correct. We've proposed removing the south-facing portion. We initially proposed preserving a small section of the northwest corner of the building, and we've been asked to preserve more than that, and we've indicated that we would do that.
And where would that be?
I'm sorry, why would, why would?
Where would that be?
I apologize.
That's okay.
The staff report did not make a specific recommendation as to where. We've had a variety of discussions about where. I think it's going to take a little bit more study. I believe somebody has asked me, I apologize, I can't remember who, whether it could be the northeast-facing corner of the building, which sits proud of the shopping center and is a little bit more visible to the public, and we have indicated that that would be possible.
I'm sorry about directions. In Kitchener, we don't have directions. Could you tell me, you mentioned that if heritage comes into play on this building, your company would not invest in the Sears building? Do I have that correct, or you would not invest in the entire site?
We would reassess investing in the site generally. Merchandising anything up against that form of architecture would be very difficult, and we'd have, we would reassess all of our plans.
So am I correct that you would let that Sears building deteriorate? Or what would you do with it?
Well, we own a number of vacant Sears stores in our portfolio, as do many landlords, and we would, you know, simply reassess our plans. The building and the shopping center would remain in compliance with laws. We have obligations to maintain, you know, critical building systems. I just don't think we'd put any new money into the building to renovate it beyond its current state. It's impossible to deal with the image of, with a building with that image.
Yeah, I appreciate your answers. The, one last question, the, what I see as, excuse the word, token water tower, for example, that's being proposed here, like, I don't understand that at all. But do I have it correct that that water tower would be used to signpost stores that would be in the new mall?
The water towers, the, some of the other features that we've proposed as part of the project, their purpose is to act as wayfinding elements, as an opportunity to artfully express retailers' brands, our own brand. And it is a shape that has clearly drawn its inspiration from something, but its main purpose is to act as a branding, signing, and wayfinding feature.
Do you have those features in your other developments that you showed us?
We have other forms of podium signs that, you know, similarly draw their inspiration from different forms. And these podium signs are in some cases lower or higher, different shapes. In some cases, they have moving images, in some cases, static images.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I have some questions of staff when you get to it.
Okay, we'll come back. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Thank you so much for coming in. What is the demand for retail space the size of the Sears store as it stands right now on Fairway Road?
Well, it's vastly diminished. The store has been vacant for some time, and it is being marketed at a portion of its previous size. So it's currently one-hundred-and-sixty, one-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet. We are currently only marketing about ninety thousand square feet of retail space, and that space would be subdivided into smaller categories. So there's limited demand for retail at this point.
And as you repurpose these larger spaces that you've had in your malls, what are retailers asking for and looking for so they can give their shoppers an experience that they're looking for?
They're looking for an opportunity to present their brand in an inspiring, engaging way. Their brand is displayed not only through signage, but with show windows, with body forms in show windows, with moving imagery, with static imagery. And they, the brands that would be presented here are world-class in nature, so the retailers have extremely strong views about how they want their brands presented, and this would severely limit how those retailers could present their brands.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Netski.
Interesting looking at the photo shot you had of the portion of the building. I forget what slide number it was, but the one where you showed the demolition of twenty percent of the building. And as you pointed out, it's the addition that came on after, it's not part of the original, back in the sixty-five time period. And it sort of would conflict with the access for emergency services, and it's right by the ion corridor and hydro corridor. So I gathered from that, that the balance of the building, balance, the eighty percent of the building, will remain as the structure itself, other than all the internal renovations that you do to create all the little areas for different shops and businesses, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. For greater clarity, it's a two-story building, one level at grade, one level below grade. The portion that is below grade would be condemned and closed off, no longer accessible to the public or staff, et cetera. So that portion, while it would essentially remain, would no longer exist as occupiable space.
Okay, that lower portion was going to be my next question, what's it going to happen to? See, now you've answered it, that you're going to just sort of fill it in, I guess, or whatever you're going to do to it. So you won't use that as floor space at all?
No, that's correct. As it happens, the team has come up with a very creative solution for it. Part of rehabilitating an older site like this is, we're required to make major investments in stormwater handling facilities and landscaping, in public wayfinding, public access routes for transit, et cetera. And that is difficult to do in a fully-built-out site, particularly handling the stormwater. So what we will be doing is taking advantage of that lower level as a void for stormwater retention. We will be constructing very large stormwater handling facilities down there that will take stormwater and allow us to slowly infiltrate it into the ground. In fact, we're going to great lengths to separate rooftop stormwater from stormwater that's coming from the parking lot, the rooftop stormwater being cleaner. And we are segregating that into these holding tanks and then infiltrating it into the groundwater, this being seen as best practice for handling stormwater on a site like this.
When I look at the picture of the design of your main building, that's where the Sears building is, it has basically three sides, the Fairway Road side, then the two sides, one facing the highway eight, then there's the opposite side, and then the back, it really attaches to the balance of the mall. Of the three sides, which is the most important one?
For our purpose, the south-facing side. That's the side that many shoppers and the general public would see and, in many cases, park up against. And from the retailer's point of view, that's a key elevation for displaying brand material. that's a key elevation for displaying brand material.
So, it's the Fairway Road side. When I look at the drawings that you have there, and again, the depiction as well, I see that your objective is to have as much window exposure as possible for the different businesses so they can be seen by the public from the roadway. Correct? Could it not be feasible to maintain the upper portion of the existing Sears building, the concrete 20 feet or 28 feet, whatever it was, 20-foot-high precast molded stone? And the part below, which is where the green glazed brick is, take that green glazed brick, remove it as much as you need, and redesign that lower portion from the ground up to about eight feet or nine feet, however the height is there, and create openings along the entire frontage?
In our opinion, no. Our retail clients would not accept that as appropriate location to place their brand. We deal with a number of retailers, both physical retailers and online retailers, who take their brand very seriously and personally. And they have brand guidelines that they have to adhere to. And that would not be sufficient to attract them to that location.
But your objective was to have as much exposure, window-wise, to the public and for that purpose. So, could you not design what you have here in terms of your design and incorporate it into that eight feet for the entire frontage along Fairway Road? And satisfy your clients, yet you created the opening and yet you preserve the top?
That strip of glazed brick is very, very low. When most people walk along the front of the building, they choose not to walk under it because I think they visually perceive they might bang their head on it. There are, it's essentially an area where some shrubs grow now. But most of the pedestrian circulation is outboard of that strip. It's not a place where people choose to circulate freely. The vast majority of that elevation visually is the precast.
Yeah, I understand that. That's where we, along the back portion there, if you're walking that strip that you're going to want to preserve, is that narrow corridor. And of course, people would walk under that, too. There's no landscaping there.
No, I appreciate that. I guess all I can answer is that the strip of glazed brick on the south elevation is not sufficient to be able to apply new fenestration to it and establish the kind of image that is going to make a successful retail project. I respect the suggestion. But in our opinion, the precast, the entire elevation has to be re-clad and re-merchandised. Or we're simply not going to have an agreeable environment where people are going to want to freely circulate or shop, or where brands would want to be associated.
Yeah, I'm going to have to move on. Councillor Davie.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Just a couple of quick questions. Apologies if they were asked and did have to step over for a moment. How many properties, can I ask, that Cadillac Fairview owns?
So, in terms of the major retail centers, approximately 20 across the country. We would have many hundreds of properties across the country, though, when you add up all the individual holdings.
Okay. So, and I think I heard you mention that you have some other areas where Sears stores have closed. They were your, they were leasing buildings as well?
Yes, we've redeveloped a number of Sears stores.
Okay. So, the reason I ask is because this redevelopment is a priority to Cadillac Fairview now. But if there's a setback, you have other properties you need to deal with?
Yeah, we've got finite resources and finite capital to invest in a portfolio. We invest where we are able to meet our investment objectives. And there are some Sears stores in our portfolio that are likely to remain undeveloped for a significant period of time.
Okay. Last thing I wanted to touch upon. I recall a report, I think it was an American report, about a year or so ago, that indicated that they think that 20%, 25% of malls in America, North America, would be shutting down in about five years. Are you familiar with that? Did you hear that? I think it was sort of Credit Suisse or?
Our estimates are for more than that.
For more than that, okay, thank you.
Okay, those are the questions from council. I have a few questions myself, Mr McEwen. And you've touched on some of this already, but I really want to try to see if we can synthesize it. The project that's before us is really an investment decision by Cadillac Fairview, as I recall, to look at their large properties across the country and to create a model site that would be potentially used for the redevelopment of other properties like this across the country. And because of the LRT, because of the size of the site, the availability of the Sears building and the potential to repurpose it, both from a retail, a commercial, an office, and ultimately, a residential perspective, is what led your company to make the investment decision to prioritize this property over others in the country?
Yes, that's correct. Our strategic direction is to densify and diversify around our malls. We are long-term owners. We don't want to sell these properties. They're located in wonderful communities, in many cases, with wonderful access to transit, et cetera. So, where the property no longer meets a commercial need, our intent is to densify, add more density around the property, and diversify, add more property types. And the return of this Sears box to us through the Sears insolvency gives us the opportunity to do that. This is, would be our first property in southwest Ontario, our first property in Ontario, where we would be bringing this type of density and diversification to the market. And we're very excited about redeveloping it.
And you touched on it, but, you know, I know there's much sort of been said about the fact that we're trying to create a look that perhaps isn't indicative of this corner of the city and the creation of water towers and so on. In fact, I think one of the delegations referred to it as sort of the Disneyizing of the shopping experience, if I heard her correctly. I guess my point is that the retail experience, as I understand it, is fundamentally changing. We're either seeing sort of the mid-to-large, to big-box experience and seeing that evolving, or we're seeing the experiential retail scene evolving. And retailers that are working hard to try to remain relevant and successful are focusing on that, but have a definitive look and feel in mind that has to respond, not necessarily to the needs of city councils, but needs to respond to the needs of consumers who are either going to make those retailers and those malls successful or not. Is that a fair sort of summary?
Yes. The shopper has never had more ways of making purchases available to them right now. You know, in the past, 30, 40 years ago, the only way to buy something was to tough it out through a mall parking lot and go and find a staff person on the floor of a department store and buy something. And certainly, the shopper doesn't have to do that anymore. And they won't do it. They have an infinite number of ways to buy now. And the only way they will come out and shop a physical offering is if it is interesting, animated, if it's an agreeable place to spend time with their friends, to socialize with other people, to find interesting, unexpected shapes and forms. And, you know, our hope is that we can take the best of what retail shopping is now, use it as a fabric to tie together other uses, office and retail, to create more of a mixed-use community, a space that is lively after hours, that is busy with office workers during the day who can go and shop the retail shops and with residents in the evening who can go into the restaurants. And that is more art than science. But there is certainly some need to make it an interesting, animated space. If it's a drab, windswept space, the shopper will find some other place to go.
And my last question is, you indicated, you know, if you don't receive a positive signal in terms of the direction of this project from council, Cadillac Fairview would be revisiting their investment decision and potentially, and likely going elsewhere. If that were to be the case, I'm wondering if you can just sort of give us a sense, because this is over the various phases of over $400 million project. Do you have any estimates in terms of the number of jobs that are involved, both from a construction point of view? And then any estimates in terms of operations afterwards in those spaces?
We're usually careful about often those estimates because they vary widely. The mall, for example, during the Christmas season could employ over 1,000 people, but much less than that perhaps during the summer. The office space that we have, the employee density varies dramatically depending on what type of office user is in the space. But we are picturing, suffice it to say, between residents, retail employees, and office employees, 5,000 to 10,000 individuals who would either live or come to work every day at this site. And then, of course, the jobs involved in building the space, which you've already seen some of that with our project on the south side of Fairway Road. But there would be hundreds of millions of dollars of additional construction, jobs created in the market while we procure this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are all the questions we have for you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have one last delegation. Kristin Barisdale from GSP Group. Welcome, Ms Barisdale.
Good evening, Mr Mayor Verbanenbeck and members of council. My name is Kristin Barisdale from GSP Group. We represent Cadillac Fairview with regards to all planning matters for Fairview Park Mall. Further to Mr McEwen's information, I was just going to reiterate Cadillac Fairview's objection to the recommendation of the Heritage Kitchener Committee to proceed with the issuance of the intent to designate for 200 Fairway Road South, the former Sears building. We request that council allow Cadillac Fairview to proceed with their application for intention to demolish and refuse the recommendation of the Heritage Kitchener Committee to proceed with the notice of intent to designate. As touched on, Cadillac Fairview has recently announced plans for a significant investment in Fairview Park Mall to transform it into a mixed-use center. A site plan application was submitted to the city on August 9th for Phase 1 of the Grand Market District. The Phase 1 site plan includes the renovation of the former Sears space, which we've been discussing this evening, as well as provides for two four-story, or sorry, one four-story retail and office building located at the main entrance to the mall on Fairway Road and two standalone restaurant pads located behind it. The renovation of the former Sears space includes the removal of approximately 20% of the former space to provide for the ION extension and the demolition of all but the northern facade of the now obsolete building. It is our opinion that the demolition of the majority of the Sears facade and the repurposing of the former department store space is in keeping with the city's official plan and assists Cadillac Fairview in achieving the city's urban design objectives for community design, building design, connectivity, and placemaking around this future ION station at Fairway. The official plan encourages site redevelopment that improves the public realm, ensures comfortable circulation, and creates safe, secure, and usable spaces. The redevelopment of the former Sears space will contribute to a more active streetscape along the southern facade of the site, which is adjacent to Fairway Road. It will also create more active and usable public realm through the addition of exterior entrances, enhanced pedestrian connections and landscape design. The majority of the former inactive Sears facade will be replaced with a more active, vibrant, human-scaled, pedestrian-oriented streetscape. The official plan encourages attractive building forms and facades with a high standard of building design for properties at priority locations, such as Fairview Park Mall. The renovated southern building facade will include varied building and architectural detailing, creating a modernized and attractive view of the new Grand Market District from Fairview Road, as well as the highway age interchange. The official plan encourages the protection of significant natural features, which are defined as resources that have been determined to have cultural heritage value or interest for the important contribution they make to the understanding of the place, an event, or people. While the former Sears facade represents a good example of what is referred to as the Kennedy-era international style, I would suggest that it has no significant association with a theme, event, belief, person, or activity or institution from the community or the city of Kitchener as a whole. The official plan further defines conservation as the identification, protection, management, and use of built heritage resources in a manner that ensures their cultural heritage value or interests is retained under the Ontario Heritage Act, which may include mitigative measures or alternative development approaches. In recognition of the importance of this historical architectural example of style, Cadillac Fairview proposes to maintain a portion of the former Sears facade to provide for the preservation of the value and merit of the architectural style. In addition, as you heard this evening, we continue to work with city staff to provide for further preservation and maintenance of that facade. The city's Urban Design Manual contains direction on community and building design, connectivity, landscaping design, architectural style, and placemaking. The former Sears facade does little to encourage active uses along Fairway Road. The renovation of the space will include exterior entrances that will result in enhanced, more active building facade that relates more positively to the street. Fairview Park Mall is part of a major transit station area. The Urban Design Manual provides for guidance for development in mixed-use corridors and for planning around rapid transit station areas, such as ensuring a mix of land uses, enhancing transportation alternatives, connectivity, placemaking, and community design. The proposed renovation of the Sears facade aligns with the city's urban design objectives for the future Fairway ION station by providing for more pedestrian-oriented uses, incorporating modern architectural detailing, and establishing retail storefronts that provide connections for future customers. Fairview Park Mall remains the largest retail node in all of Waterloo region. In an effort to respond to the changing retail market and provide for competitive reinvestment in the center, Cadillac Fairview is proceeding with plans to revitalize and modernize Fairview Park Mall as the Grand Market District. The proposal to demolish a portion of the former Sears facade is one that must balance many competing interests for the longevity and continued vibrancy of Fairview Park Mall, including financial, architectural, transportation, safety, marketing, and heritage considerations. Cadillac Fairview recognizes the heritage interest of the former Sears facade and has continued to demonstrate to the city their willingness to preserve a portion of the facade and is committed to continuing to work with city staff. Again, we ask that council refuse the recommendation of Kitchener Heritage Committee to proceed with the issuance of the intent to designate 200 Fairway Road and allow Cadillac Fairview to proceed with their notice of intent to demolish. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? There don't appear to be any questions of you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms Barisdale. Councillor Etherington, you had questions of staff? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I don't see Mr Benson's on here. Am I correct?
He's in.
Oh, I'm sorry. You dropped out of the sky. Thank you. I wanted to ask you to clarify your recommendation, as I understand it, is that demolition be allowed to proceed, Mr Benson. Is that correct?
Go ahead, Mr Benson.
Through you, Mr Mayor. When the city receives a notice of intention to demolish a property that is listed on the Heritage Register, council has essentially three options in front of them. One is to ask for more information, if more information is needed. Another is to take no action on the notice of intention to demolish, so essentially allow the 60 days to lapse. And then, the third option is to designate as a means of preventing the demolition or the alteration. So, with those three options, it's staff's recommendation that the no-action option take place. Now, in that type of situation, the owner would be in a position of getting a demolition permit after the 60 days are over. However, in this instance, this proposal to demolish and alter is also the subject of a site plan application under the Planning Act. And with that application, we have the opportunity to ensure that an appropriate level of conservation is achieved. So, while my recommendation to council is to allow the 60 days to lapse, I'm also cognizant of the fact that they are going through a planning process and do require site plan approval. And through that process, there is a requirement that the decision on the site plan be consistent with the provincial policy statement, with the provincial policy statement, which says built heritage resources shall be conserved. And so staff want to continue to work with the applicant to ensure that's achieved.
And second question, do you believe that the facade alone facing Fairway Road could be saved as part of this development?
Mr. Bensonsohn, and just leave your mic on.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I believe the facade could be saved. However, it is quite clear that that southern-facing facade is one that the owner certainly wants to alter. It is the facade that has the greatest public exposure, and that's where they want to have the multiple kind of entrances to the individual retail units. So understanding that, staff is willing to work and compromise and understand, are there other areas of that building where we can retain other portions of the facade in a meaningful way?
And do you think, from a public point of view, that would be as valuable as retaining where it is?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think from the public point of view, if you can retain enough portions of the original elevation that are visible, that are accessible to the public, and that in combination with commemoration signage, so that the story of the building and its significance can be told, I think that would be in the public interest.
And do I understand correctly that whatever you are recommending, or whatever you just explained, is different from the decision taken at the Heritage Committee?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation that I made in my staff report was, is not the recommendation that is in front of council. This evening, the Heritage Committee recommended an alternative option, which is to designate as a means of preventing the demolition and alteration.
And that is what we're voting on tonight?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have three members, councillors, on that Heritage Committee. I was at that meeting, I believe there was only one of the three present at that vote. And so I find that really curious. Our interest in heritage, in my opinion, is reflected in that kind of membership. Just my opinion.
Counselor Marsh.
Oh, sorry, I clicked it. There you go. So my question is just regarding the next steps. If we were to go ahead and choose to do nothing, and by default let the site plan process take over, I want to know what assurances would council have, and members of the public indeed have, that the site plan process will result in preservation of sufficient heritage features to satisfy all? So I just want to understand, will there be an opportunity, or could we make an opportunity for the plans to be brought back to council before final approval?
Mr. Bensonsohn, Mr. Redman, and I mean, I'd even venture to answer that on your behalf to say, as you know, site plan approval is a process that we delegate to staff. And I would suggest it would become a very slippery slope if we start opening the door with one application to start trying to meddle with it. Mr. Redman, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
Through the mayor, that's what I was going to state as well.
So I'm just trying to understand the, one of the three options before us, which is to receive more information, and couldn't one of the pieces of information be the heritage features that will be preserved to be shown to council? Isn't that what that might look like?
Mr. Bensonsohn.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The additional information really, from my perspective, relates to the information that would be referenced in the Heritage Impact Assessment that has yet to be approved. And from staff's perspective, requires updating and additional research to be included in that. I think it would be helpful for staff, in terms of our next step, which would be to work with Cadillac Fairview at a, through the site plan process, it would be helpful for staff to understand if there are expectations from council in terms of the result and what they would like to see achieved in the form of heritage conservation, that we would take that into mind as we continue to work with the applicant through the approval of the site plan.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, those are the questions from council. Mr. Bensonsohn, I have a couple of questions. We've had numerous projects that have been redeveloped that are historical brick-and-beam buildings but are not designated, is that correct? And I'm thinking in particular, the Tannery, Bright Up Block, the building where Deloitte is now, and so on, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is absolutely correct. The Lang Tannery and the Bright Up Block are examples of buildings that are listed in the same way that the Sears Building is listed. And we were able to achieve a good level of conservation through the adaptive reuse of those buildings.
And from a heritage perspective, you're satisfied with what was able to be achieved without going the extra step of designation?
Yes, that's correct. I think we were satisfied with the level of conservation that was achieved. It balanced a number of interests. That's not to say that we wouldn't be interested in designation. I think there was a willingness to consider a designation after the work was completed.
And the fact that we, would it be reasonable to suggest that the fact that we didn't designate and worked with the developers, we probably were able to achieve greater success in that spirit of collaboration than maybe we might have under other circumstances?
Yes, if we were to designate now, then that introduces a number of complexities in terms of having to make multiple heritage permit applications to achieve what could likely be achieved without having to go through that process, if we go through the site plan process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we need to deal with the recommendation coming out of committee first, so I'll go to Counselor Gazola on that. And then, depending on what happens with this recommendation, we could potentially take another motion. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Janetsky. And this is coming from the Heritage Committee, that in response to the written notice of intention to demolish dated August 9th, 2018, and deemed complete on October 16th, 2018, submitted in accordance with Section 27-3 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and having regard to the property municipally addressed as 200 Fairway Road South, commonly known as the Sears Building, the clerk be directed to issue a notice of intention to designate 200 Fairway Road South pursuant to Section 29 of the Heritage, Ontario Heritage Act, so as to provide council the authority to deny the demolition of the Sears Building as outlined in Development Services Department Report, DSD-18-147. Now, if that motion fails to succeed, I was going to ask that we then bring forward the original recommendation that staff brought to the Heritage Committee. So I'll leave that for the time being.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I think what we've seen here this evening and through meetings with Cadillac Fairview is there is an openness and a desire to incorporate some of the heritage features of this building. And there's also, what I feel is a great vision for this property with residential, with office, with retail, and an investment and a belief in this community by Cadillac Fairview, that this is a community where they want to test and they want to pilot this sort of development and bring it across the rest of the country. I think it's, you know, we've heard the ability to work together, they want to work together. But this is a great project that I think should go through, and I don't think that we need to designate.
Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, tonight's meeting is my last council session before stepping down. It's interesting to note that when I started work as a councillor eight years ago, one of the issues I was fighting for was to preserve beautiful old brick-and-beam buildings on Joseph Street behind the Tannery. All but one of those buildings were bulldozed to create a dusty gravel parking lot, and they could have been, in my opinion, better used, but councillors of the day decided that they were useless and flattened them. Now go take a look at that gem of a building that was preserved and excellently restored by Deloitte, as some of the most stunning office space found in Kitchener. That could also happen, I admit it's very different, but it could also happen at the one we're looking at now, the 53-year-old Sears Building, without tearing the historic landmark down and creating, as was said, vast amounts of landfill. It could easily happen with this one. We have heard the legitimate appeals to preserve the building, particularly the pre-cast concrete part of the building that faces Fairway Road, and what used to be the architecturally splendid John Lingwood Building that provided my home and that of the Waterloo Region record for most of my career in journalism. It was another gem of a building that was flattened. I just want to mention, in my opinion, a brilliant young Kitchener friend of mine, Nathan Storing, lives in, or before he moved, he lived in Victoria Park, he co-wrote a book about visionary urbanist and activist Jane Jacobs, and is now Deputy Director with the Bass Center on Innovation and Placemaking Project for Public Places in the Greater New York Area. He commented recently on the question before us and said the Sears Building should be saved. And I'm quoting him, "With less parking, a redesigned active ground floor, wider sidewalks with comfortable amenities and complimentary infill development, it could be great." He continued, "Taste changes. Industrial buildings, like the ones at the Tannery, were once considered passe as well. Don't make the same mistake." I agree with him, and I fully support designating the Sears Building, and appeal to fellow councillors to do the same and stop destroying Kitchener's history.
Counselor Fernandez.
So we've heard of some rationale from Cadillac Fairview about opening up the vistas, the pedestrian realm, so that people feel more welcoming into the mall, and the changes that are happening within our retail spaces. And I can't disagree with many of what Mr. McEwen was saying. But when I look at the minutes of the meeting, some of the wording that sticks out to me is wording like, "We'll continue to work with the City of Kitchener to find an appropriate and meaningful approach." That consideration has been given to using materials from the existing structure in the future redevelopment where possible. That should give me hope and optimism that that will happen, but far too often I've seen where a little change or a, something that may add additional cost or challenges, and everything changes. And before you know it, the whole building is completely gone. So I think that with, you know, architects today have a lot of different avenues and a lot of new and innovative ideas. Why not test that out here? You've got some great plans, and I think you're going to be bringing in people from all different sectors, and you're going to be attracting professionals, and medical centers, and office buildings, and residents to live within the area. I'd like to see you also be creative in preserving the building and certainly the facade. I think Cadillac Fairview has, have very deep pockets, and I think you probably could make this an outstanding example of mixing modern architecture, sorry, mid-century architecture with modern and new innovatives, and always have that as a backup. And people will look at that and think, wow, Cadillac Fairview really are forward-thinking in how innovative and creative they have been.
Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank all the delegations that came forward and put forward varied viewpoints. And although we, depending on which direction this council will take, those are important viewpoints. But my focus will be tonight, and as has been before, as I do sit on the Heritage Kitchener Committee, is that we have a property owner who's prepared to revitalize a property that is an important node in our city. Changes are required for them to achieve their intended vision, and this would not be possible with an outright designation. The way I see it, as our community progresses and evolves, it can't always be an all-or-nothing proposition. The applicant is not only providing homage to the brick-and-beam architecture, which is a significant part of our community's manufacturing history, they are also taking extensive efforts to conserving a portion of the existing pre-cast construction with commemoration and signage that will speak to and explain the significance of that era. And it's just not just what you can look at, but it's also what you can learn from it. And sometimes we don't put enough of an effort on that prospect. So we have to strike a balance, and I'm glad that Counselor Etherington mentioned the new redesigned Deloitte Building, which wasn't designated, and the developer worked with her staff to take efforts to conserve and still be appreciative and respectful of that architecture and original design while also modernizing the building as well. And the applicant has made comments that they will take the same steps moving forward. So for that reason, I can support the very strict position taken by the Heritage Committee, and I will be supporting the initial staff recommendation for no action. And if this fails, I will be supporting the further amendment that's put forward by Counselor Gazola as well.
Counselor Gazola.
Thank you. I have served on Heritage Committee forever, every year since 2004, except for a two-year period in which I attended all the meetings, because I wasn't officially on the committee, but I was deeply interested in heritage. And over that period of time, I have usually been on the other side of the fence, often when these issues come to council. In this particular case, I did not support, I was one of the four that did not support the recommendation that has come before you. I've learned over the years, I think I have a great deal of experience, and I just want to give one little example of this. to give one little example of this type of issue. In the ward that I represent, I have two of the original homesteads in this region. On the one side, we have, we have owners who were, in addition to our heritage of the city, the owners are very extremely interested in heritage and have done a tremendous job in saving the property. Next door to that property, we have a similar type building, one of our original properties in the region. Unfortunately, that owner has not been interested in heritage, and it's reflected in the property. It's reflected in that there, there's a, will come a time, I hope that that property can be saved. We have, in this situation, we have an owner that has indicated their interest to help preserve. And when staff brought this to Heritage Committee, they were torn also. Yes, if they had to druthers, be nice to save the entire building, as is, but they realize that sometimes that is not possible. So they, they've taken the other approach that, "Let's work together." As we have, examples have been given here of two or three buildings in our community that were not designated, and yet have been saved, and tremendous improvements have come to them. And so that's the approach that staff were taking with their recommendation, and I can totally support that. I can support it because I've seen from my own experience in the ward that I represent what has happened. We are going through a new era with brick and mortar buildings. Malls, the question was raised tonight, 25 percent, the figure is much higher. I, I see it all over. It's unfortunate that this is where we're going. It's so easy to do things online that brick and mortar buildings, and this is a retail business, they are, they are struggling. And we have here an opportunity, I think, to continue, to continue with this retail business to, and this, this area of the city, I, this whole area of the city, Fairway Road, has put tremendous tax dollars into the coffers of the city. It's a tremendous commercial area. When the city downtown was struggling, this area was, was active, busy, and bringing many tax dollars to the community. So in this particular case, yes, if money were no object, and we would designate the building at the builder, the owner didn't want to do what we wanted to do, we could go and buy it, and we could do it. But we don't have that kind of money to do that. So I think we've got the best of both worlds here, and we, this does have to go through this planning process. So they will, they have to continue to work with staff until that is completed tonight. And that's why I specifically asked Mr. McEwen this evening, and it's on public, public record, if they're committed to looking, at looking at the ways that staff have already presented and even going further. And they've given their commitment in public, which I think will, will hold. So for that reason, I will not be supporting the recommendation that's come forward, and if that fails, it will bring forward the recommendation that staff brought to Heritage Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gazola. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that I have full confidence in our process of site plan approvals and our, our urban design manual that staff have developed to, to help guide the proponent and staff to come to a great solution. I just, in understanding that the original offer to preserve a hidden slice of the precast feature, heritage feature was, is, it's not sufficient. It's, it's not a genuine attempt at heritage preservation, and so that's the part that, that really concerned me. But seeing that the proponent is on record as saying that, yes, they're willing to preserve more of that portion of the heritage feature, I think that that is, is a good sign. I really do feel that when, in Kitchener, we see the most successful redesigns of older buildings, we, the most successful projects are when the, we take an authentic look at what we're trying to do and, and embrace and incorporate the heritage features, rather than try to hide them away in a little walkway that, that really the heritage feature could not have even been seen. So I really do have confidence in the skills and the creativity as well of the proponent and their consultant to incorporate a more prominent heritage feature. And I would encourage you to, to be bold, to rethink that design. Yes, brick and beam is, is seen right now as the hottest form of, of real estate, but, but if we can find better ways to incorporate the old end, and the, you know, refresh to make it look like brick and beam, I think that you can come up with something terrific. I also want to just flag, on a separate note, the name, the Grand Market District. We also have another market district in Kitchener, and that's the, our Kitchener Market, which is going, we are undertaking a rebranding of that area. So if we have two market districts, it may be confusing. I would say that we should make sure that we are aligned in understanding the brands so that we, we don't overlap and make it confusing for members of the public.
Counselor Davie.
Thank you. I, I agree with Counselor Gazola. I don't actually necessarily think Heritage made the wrong decision. I just think that Heritage makes decisions based entirely on Heritage principles. I've said this several times in the past, but this council has liberty to look at the broader picture and what the impacts are of those decisions. So what do we know? We know that traditional malls are dying. Independent reports have put that number at 25 percent of malls in as few as five years, and the delegation has indicated that it's actually worse than that from their projections. We've seen Eaton's, Toys R Us, Zeller's, Sears, and even, I think Lowe's mentioned not more than a week ago, that they're closing 51 stores in North America, and 31 of those are in Canada. Meanwhile, we have Cadillac Fairview, which is a very large corporation. They have, my understanding is they have close to $30 billion in assets. This is one of many, many properties in their portfolio, and I'm sure many that need attention. Right now, their gaze is upon this specific property, and they have come with a proposal to revitalize it and invest hundreds of millions of dollars. So we're left with the question, what's the heritage of this value worth? One decision, and it's not lost to me that this, this building has a bit of a skeletal design the way I've always seen it, but one, one decision will see a portion of the skeletal design saved to pay homage to an extinct style of retail. The other decision that we could make here tonight would see that complete skeletal, skeletal design sitting for years as a grim reminder of an opportunity that we lost.
Counselor Unetsky.
When I look, when I look at the design and the features of the nice glossy presentation that Cadillac Fairview has presented, and, and where they're aiming towards in terms of redevelopment of the site, it looks wonderful. I think it's a, it's a wonderful step to rejuvenate that portion of the, of the, of the site. They've got three portions or three buildings that are going to be new that they've shown, two down in the bottom left and one on the east side towards Highway Eight. And they're brand-new buildings, and they will certainly fit into the character and the marketing that they wish to bring forward. The central building where the Sears Building is currently, is the one that's basically in, in controversy and in contention in terms of opinions here around the horseshoe. Through the questioning that took place, we see that the building will be preserved, the structure itself, except for 20 percent, that on the west side portion that will be removed. And the intent also is to remove the entire facade around the buildings, save it except the little portion at the back that has been negotiated between staff with the, with the applicant. Unfortunately, the location of that portion of, at the back is what we don't see. I'm sure it's preserved, you've got to go back there and find it, and yes, we technically saved it. But the whole portion is that, that we have from a Heritage perspective is, is the frontage, and that's what we like to preserve. We had similar issues back over the last few years in terms of other 1960s-style buildings that we have maintained and saved from demolition. We had the issue here at the corner of King and Frederick with the old TD Building, which you know is Krabby Joe's, and it, and it was been saved, redesigned inside, although the outside has been totally preserved and is still there. We had the same issue just that we discussed back just a few years ago about tearing down the main Kitchener Public Library and putting it on King Street. And that was a big controversy at the time. But no, from the discussions that we had back a couple of terms ago, we worked with the KPL people and members around council and staff, and we saved the KPL building in terms of the frontage along Queen Street, added an addition at the back, and expanded that. So it can be saved. And Forest Heights Collegiate is another building that was built back in the 60s, got the same concrete-type slab design, slightly different in terms of features, but the whole principle is the same, and it's still in existence right now. We can incorporate, and through the questioning that I had earlier, maintaining the facade at the front, and the questions that I had is, more window openings that you need along the Fairway Road frontage? You can take the whole ground floor area of the first eight, nine feet, redesign that in terms of complementing the features of the, of the other buildings that they want to build and, and the marketing that they want to do on that, and it will work. Yes, it costs dollars and cents, but when you've got a big project like this, you can do quite a bit with it. It is feasible. And now that we go through the site plan process, that is also before us, or not before us, but before staff in terms of processing it here with the city, those types of features of the heritage features could be incorporated in that frontage along Fairway Road. It can be done. Architects can do it, engineers can design portions of it, of course, the architects can fine-tune it and make it look to complement the balance of the intent of the Grand Market District. It's doable. So I feel that, I'm torn, as, as, as a planning background with the future development, because I know Sears have gone down a lot of buildings throughout North America, department stores are closing because the marketing has changed in now in the 21st century, and you've got to sort of re, refine yourself in terms of something different. And here's a project that's good. But we can still keep that heritage component as part of this. And so I am prepared to have the full designation, the recommendation by Heritage Committee to support that, to deny the demolition. And when we do this, I'd like to have a recorded vote.
Counselor Galloway-Silak.
Just quickly, I wanted to, I'd be repeating a lot of what's already been said, so I just want to be short by saying that I'm not an expert in architecture, and I'm not an expert in heritage, but what I know is we have a tremendous opportunity here to get to having the best of both worlds. A new revitalized development while still preserving some of the heritage features. And so I think it's important for us to continue to move forward, because this is going to be a huge redevelopment, a huge investment in our community, and I think it's really going to boost our economy with jobs. And I also just wanted to mention that, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Anyways, I'm supportive of moving in the direction of redevelopment while still being able to preserve some of the heritage features.
Okay, those are all the comments from council. I'll make a few of my, my own. Begin by thanking all of the delegations on, on both sides of this issue for coming and passionately speaking and sharing your thoughts with us on, on this issue. I think there have been a number of good comments made by members of council, but in particular, Counselors Gazola and Davie, with the focus around the fact that we've seen numerous examples of where we have worked collaboratively with other developers in town on projects like the Tannery, like Brightup Block, like the Deloitte Building, and seen as, as our staff have indicated, successful outcomes without going the route of designation. And I also acknowledge, as Counselor Davie said, that it's the Heritage Committee's responsibility to look at these projects from a Heritage point of view. It's council's responsibility to factor in all of the other issues in addition to Heritage and find that right balance. In looking at this issue, I've certainly received a number of comments, and I will be frank, majority of the comments have been, "Tear the whole thing down and start over again," from the comments that, that I've received. I don't share in that view. I think we need to work collaboratively with the developer, as has been suggested, to preserve the, you know, as much of the architectural look of this building as possible, as is feasible in, in the new retail era that, that we're working in. I can also tell you as, you know, as, as a former employee of Sears for, for a number of years, the, that, that back entrance, quite frankly, the northwest side, was never really very much used by anybody. I mean, it was a staff entrance, and, and even as a mall entrance, it's, it's not used that much. So I think moving it to the northeast, as Mr. McEwen suggested, might be a possibility based on dialogue with staff, I think would, would make some sense. But they've got, you know, good professional, well-regarded architects that are going to work with them to come up with what I believe will be a first-class product. We're not dealing with, you know, a fly-by-night developer or operator here. I mean, this, these, you know, Cadillac Fairview is one of the, the most significant and respected outfits in the country when it comes to these kinds of projects. And so I'm confident that they will work in a collaborative way with their staff so that they have a product that they're proud of, that we as a city have a product that they're proud of, and most importantly, that we collectively have a product that's going to be viable and see that plaza continue to be successful and be a place for thousands of people to live, work in, and play in for the next 50-plus years going, going forward. And I think, you know, if we look at it that way, and that's the way I believe it will be looked at, we stand the best chance of having a positive impact on our community, both in terms of the kind of facility and, and overall area that gets developed, including the kind of place-making that Counselor Etherington talked about, while also, you know, creating the kinds of jobs that are going to have a significant impact on, on our community. So I won't be supporting the designation that's proposed here, and we'll be supporting Counselor Gazola's alternate motion when he brings it forward.
A recorded vote has been called on the motion as it stands. All those opposed? The motion doesn't carry. Counselor Gazola.
Yes, the recommendation that came to the Heritage Committee read as follows, "That in accordance with Section 27-3 of the Ontario Heritage Act, the written notice of intention to demolish dated August the 9th, 2018, and deemed complete on October the 6th..." to demolish dated August the 9th, 2018, and deemed complete on October the 16th, 2018 regarding the property municipally addressed as 200 Fairway Road South and commonly known as the Sears Building, be received for information and that the notice period run the course. I would ask for a recorded vote.
Do I have a second, Counselor Singh? Thank you. Recorded vote has been requested. All those opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming in this evening. We have one more delegation on a, it's a delegation that wants to speak with respect to a bike accident and talk about cyclist safety. Because this isn't on our agenda tonight, I'll require a motion to waive notice. Moved by Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Singh. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. So I'll invite Ms. Louise Kramer forward. Welcome.
Thank you.
Don't be nervous.
Safer Streets. I live at 3 DK Street. I'm 10 years old and my name is Louise Kramer. Your worship, Mayor Verbanovic and members of council, I'm here tonight to tell you about my accident and how the city can make safer streets for all of us. On October 3rd, I was biking home from school on Guelph Street near Margaret Avenue. A car was behind me, so I tried to ride on the sidewalk. My wheel hit a big curb. I fell off my bike and broke my arm. The driver behind me stopped and immediately called 911. I had two broken bones. Guelph Street was repaired in 2017 after putting new pipes under the road. The road needs two coats of pavement to be finished. The city waits two years to put down the second coat. That leaves a two-inch curb between the road and the sidewalk. Leaving a big curb like that is very dangerous. I know firsthand. I got a nasty scar from it. The city told my family that this saves money. I stayed at the hospital overnight and total that was 20 hours. It costs about $10,000. I missed a couple days of school and I was in a lot of pain. That's worth something, too. Counselors, you have the power to, you have the power in your hands. You can make safer streets in our city. Pedestrians and cyclists, wheelchair users and any other mobility devices have a hard time with big curbs. You can change the policy and help prevent accidents like mine in the future. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And that was a very good presentation on your behalf. And sorry to hear about the accident. I too have had a little bit of an accident, not cycling-related, this past year, so I can, if nothing else, say I share a little bit of your feeling of pain that comes with it. We do have some questions for you. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad to hear that you're healing. But certainly, I'm sure that getting back on your bike is something that you're a little bit reluctant to do until you see safer curbs, right?
Definitely.
Yeah. And as an avid cyclist myself, I know what it feels like when you hit a curb and you know you're going to go over. So although I think that our staff would be able to explain some of the rationale around the two years before we complete the asphalt, maybe what we should be doing, and you can tell me if you agree, is putting some kind of signage in temporarily to let people know that there is that dangerous curb and to maybe allow people to cycle on the sidewalk without any feeling that they're breaking the law. What do you think about that?
I kind of agree to that, but the reason you only put one layer of pavement down is because you have this warranty that it's cheaper to, if the pipes need to be repaired, it's cheaper with one layer to take up. But if they're new pipes, they're rarely replaced.
And you're correct. If they've recently done some road reconstruction, there should be pretty new pipes and we would not expect them to be breaking, right? I think there may be some other, I don't know if staff maybe wanted to add a little bit more information as to why we take that period of time to do the two layers of asphalt. So maybe what we'll do after you're done is ask them if they'll explain that. What other suggestions would you like to see happen if we do have to wait for those two years before we can put on that second layer of asphalt and have, still have that curb that's a bit dangerous to bike against?
I think maybe you could like use wheelchair-friendly, like those small curbs, like maybe to help get outdoors, but like you can make them for sidewalks.
Okay, all right, that's a good, so you'd like to see the curbs that are accessing onto the street, that they would be smoother so that to, if you did want to go and ride on the sidewalk, that you wouldn't have to bump up a curb? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion. All right, well, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. And after, if anybody has any other questions, I'll have a question of staff. Okay, thank you. Get better soon.
Counselor Marsh? Hold on, we've got more questions for you. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, Louise, for waiting through that long other item and waiting to present to us. Now, how long did you have your cast on for?
Six weeks.
So you just got it off recently?
Yep.
Yeah. And so how, what do you think we should do? Tell us about this, your idea about a ramp of sorts. What do you think we should do about that lip? I didn't understand your answer.
Well, I haven't really put much thought into it, but like you, there's a really big gap between the sidewalk and the road. And like if we just put even just a small thing to make sure it's safer, I would be a lot happier to bike again.
Definitely. Okay. Well, thank you again for your presentation. It was really well done.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much, Louise, for coming in tonight and sharing your circumstances with us. We will ask some questions of staff and hopefully, from you sharing your experience, we'll be able to make some changes that might make it better for other people in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fernandez, you indicated you had a question of staff?
Yes, so I mean, we see this happen quite often when we're resurfacing roads and I understand that there is a rational, but maybe we can help Louise and maybe her parents understand some of the rationale why we wait those two years. And would it be possible for us to consider putting a little bit, an additional bit of asphalt as we transition from the road to the sidewalk? Because I think that's where Louise was saying that was the biggest challenge. I know it's only a temporary fix, but at least it would preserve and save some of our cyclists from having an accident.
Mr. Redman.
Through the mayor. So the reason why we wait the period of two years in between is there's sometimes deficiency work that has to be taken care of below the ground surface. So sometimes there's a valve that's faulty or a pipe that the connection ends up being faulty, so when we go back to inspect the work, we may have to cut the road and then go in and do some work. So if we wait for the two-year period and putting the final layer of asphalt onto the road minimizes future deterioration of the asphalt surface because the number of cuts in the road allows water and salt and freeze thaw to happen, which leads to puddles and other things. So that's the primary reason for waiting the two years. One of the things that was flagged on our cycling and walking tours that we did as part of the Cycling Master Plan Refresh was identify some of those gaps. And we were talking with staff to look at if there's any way to maybe put a temporary lift of asphalt at some of those key locations. So we haven't finalized that yet and any contracts or finished that discussion, but that is something that was flagged recently this fall.
Okay, and that, I mean, that is a great outcome of all of the different cycling tours, I guess we'll call them, that happened throughout the city. So maybe Louise can take a little bit of encouragement from knowing that not only did she have an accident, but other people have identified that as a concern. One other quick thought is, I mean, we don't want to have signs everywhere, but certainly maybe a sign that identifies for drivers that because of that lip, that curve, that cyclists may take more of the road. And, you know, as a temporary measure, it might be something we can consider it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thanks again for not only coming in, but for being patient through everything else. I guess it was hopefully a good overall experience in local government for you. Maybe in the future we'll see you sitting around this horse for yourself. Maybe, awesome. So with that, that takes us through all of our delegations and we will move on to the committee reports. And we'll start with Finance and Corporate Services. Counselor Davey.
Thank you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider that Items 1 and 2 of Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, moved and seconded. Counselor Gazola.
I would like to take the two parts separately and I'd like a recorded vote on.
So you'd like which?
There are two recommendations. I'm asking that the second will be taken separately.
Okay.
Therefore, the first one will be also. I'd like a recorded vote on it.
That's fine, thank you. Counselor Marsh.
I have, as promised, a new motion for number one because we looked at ways to word it in a way that makes sense.
So this is an amendment?
So, okay, that's subject to the 2019, yeah. So, no, this is not an amendment. It's actually, well, maybe it is an amendment because it's just regarding future budget deliberations.
So I'll take it as an amendment because what you're, what you're really asking is that we put it into the budget permanently and not just in 2019.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second for the amendment? Okay, seconded by Counselor Fernandez. So I'll deal with that one first. Counselor Davey.
Thank you. I agree with where we're going with this. I just wanted to ask staff if we have another, any other funding scenarios quite like this. And the other question would have part of that. Like I'm obviously comfortable with where REAP is now, but we want to make these decisions for, you know, four, five, 10 years down the road. And I'm a little concerned about the oversight if they aren't attending at council. So is there a way we could maybe slide them into like the tier-one sort of process by keeping the funding sources utilities? As a thought.
Mr. Redman.
Through the mayor, there are some other similar examples. Our Partnership with Sustainable Waterloo Region, we have a budget line item that's similar to this. So as long as they're within inflationary increases over time, they get dealt with through the budget process. So there is still staff oversight with this. And if they were to increase outside of a typical inflationary process, it would likely be dealt with through an issue paper.
Sorry, that would come, it would come as an issue paper for the 2020 budget?
So, yes, so they would typically go through the CLT admin review or the staff admin review at that point because they wouldn't trigger the threshold to come to council. But it would be dealt with through that and updated through that process.
Okay, I'm content, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Singh.
Yeah, I just want clarity on the one part of Counselor Davey's question, and I had a similar concern. I recall through the budget process in previous years, we had shifted the REAP's funding from our utility department. If it's through the inflationary increase, that wouldn't change. The funding source would not change, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And number one, as amended, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We'll now deal with item number two. Counselor Gazola, you asked if we have a recorded vote on that one? Okay, so I'll deal with it. Recorded vote has been requested. Opposed, that's carried. Planning and Strategic Initiatives. Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you. The items as outlined are moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Etherington.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We've dealt with Heritage Kitchener. So that takes us into unfinished business, new business. Questions and answers. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, if I could, I'd like to ask Mr. Redman if he could give me.
Redman.
I'm sorry, Redman, I apologize. Redman, if you could give me an update on what's happening with our crossing, crossing the LRT to Fairway Road.
Mr. Redman.
Through the mayor. So I think with the last update I provided, we were expecting a report from the consultant on the design by about mid-fall. Some understanding is a draft has been delivered to the region with, earlier this week or last week. And we're waiting for the final information from that to acquire the property. So we've started early property negotiations with the identified property, but we need to know the land limits through this study to continue on this, through that negotiation.
So we have made some progress.
Yes, that's correct. We have made contact with the property owners and started the dialogue and we're just waiting for this report to be finalized to look to continue the property acquisition.
I just want to let you know that I'll be again asking you this on December the 17th. Thank you for the update. Thanks.
Any other questions? I just have one and I don't need an answer today. Maybe you can send an email to us, Mr. Redman. But it has to do with the Weaver Street construction that seems to be happening very late. I mean, I realize it's a regional project, but the underground is our project. And I just want to understand why the lateness of it, number one. And number two, I guess, more importantly, the piece that concerns me is when we start doing this kind of work this late in the season, is there any sort of impact potentially on quality of the work, which would then ultimately impact lifespan? And so if we can get an email update on that, that would be appreciated after you had an opportunity to talk to the relevant folks. So with that, we'll move on to first reading of the bylaws and it's been moved by Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Yonetski, that lead be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda and that the same be taken as read a first time. Is there any additional ones, Madam Clerk? No? And so read a first time and stand refer to the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Davey, that council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Davey.
Thank you. Bylaws or second reading have been moved. Those in favor? None or opposed? Very good. Could I get a mover for item number two?
It's been dealt with already.
Item two.
So number three?
Oh, pardon me. Pardon me, yes. Item number three, moved by Counselor Fernandez. Any questions? Mr. Mayor Verbanovic, any questions?
No.
No? Okay, those in favor? And none or opposed? And a mover for item number four? Moved by Counselor Marsh. Any questions? Not seeing any? Okay, those in favor?
Move that the committee rise and report.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor. Okay, and opposed? Okay, sorry, I see hands one more time, all in favor? All in favor? Okay, very good. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Etherington that the proceedings and the recorded keener interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached here, too, and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Yonetsky, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Etherington that we now adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And with that, 2014-2018 term is a wrap. Thank you, everybody.